... of Bartlett Board Meeting for May 5, 2020. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Present.
Carbonaro?
Present.
Danny?
Here.
Gabrenia?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Present.
President Wallace?
Here.
And again, in lieu of the Pledge of Allegiance, if we can all just take a couple minutes and just pray prayer, think about the families that have had so many tragedies over the last three months. Well, as a bit of a twist today, happy Cinco de Mayo, everyone.
Thank you.
I believe we're going to, at the beginning of this meeting, adjourn to an executive session to discuss eminent litigation pursuant to Section 2C 11 of the Open Meetings Act. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive meeting.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Cameron, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Is muted.
You're muted, Adam.
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned to executive meeting. We just have to leave this meeting. There's a little button on the bottom right of your screen typically says Leave Meeting. We'll go and pop and open up the executive meeting link that was forward meeting. I call the meeting back to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Is muted.
Ranky?
I don't think he's here yet.
Shall we wait for him or go on?
Yeah, I think we're gonna need everyone.
Yeah, go ahead and wait. John, you wanna try to step and get right, Aaron or trustee Ranky back on the... I'll be really proud of everybody if we actually pull this out or out and back and out and back.
We're getting to be experts at this.
Yeah.
I see his name, my trusty Ranky, is your mute just happen to be on?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Trusty Ranky?
Yeah.
President Wallace?
Here. All right, thank you, everyone, for that little unique, I guess, detour from our regular meeting. That will bring us to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items on the consent agenda. At this point, does anyone wish to add or remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the following: the minutes, board minutes, April 21, 2020. The consent also includes the bills list from May 5, 2020. The consent this evening also includes items under License and Ordinance Committee D 6 and 7. And I believe that is it.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item we have this evening is Treasurer's Report. There is none. Under the President's Report, we have Item 10A. And pursuant to our conversation, I will entertain a motion to table Item 10A.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Danny. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
All right, and motion to table that item succeeds, and that will be tabled to a further meeting. Next item on the President's Report is National Police Week Proclamation. And so...
There she was.
Each year...
In a bathroom with you.
Proclamation for National Police Week, May 10 through the 16th of 2020. Couldn't find a better time for this to be proclaimed. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of the Bartlett Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Bartlett, and whereas it is important that all citizens now know and understand the duties and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Bartlett Police Department has grown to be a modern, scientific, and nationally accredited law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, Village President, call upon all citizens of Bartlett and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 10 through 16 as Police Week with a virtual candlelight vigil on Wednesday, May 13, in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an inviolable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon citizens of Bartlett to observe Friday, May 15, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, to honor those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes, dated this 5th day of May, 2020. There's another proclamation from the President, the Village of Bartlett Proclamation, recognizing May 2020 as Bike Month. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas today millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality family recreation, and whereas the Village of Bartlett's Bike and Run Advisory Committee promotes safe bike and pedestrian activities on the village's bike path system. Ride Illinois is educating cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles at www.bikesafetyquiz.com. And whereas the Village of Bartlett, the Bartlett Park District, and the Page County Forest Reserve, and independent cyclists throughout our village are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operations and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Now therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, Village President of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, Page, and King Counties, Illinois, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of May 2020 as Bike Month in Bartlett, dated this 5th day of May, 2020. For those of you that are listening or need to kind of reiterate the date for the virtual candle vigil, it's Wednesday, May 13, where we're doing that hopefully as a entire village. And that is it for the President's Report this evening. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
I have a couple things I'd like to, under the circumstances, maybe we can have a little cheerful knowledge, cheerful information here. First thing, we have some anniversaries. We have Chris Hostetler, he's our IT Coordinator. He's been with the village for 24 years. And Lori Giles, our Village Clerk and Executive Secretary, she's been with the village for 13 years. And Todd Dowden, our Finance Director, he's been with the village for 19 years. And Tony Fraden, our Economic Development Coordinator, he's been with the village for 15 years. And probably one of the most pleasant things that I get to do this evening is let you know that we have made birthdays, and I hope that everybody cooperates with me here. Kevin Wallace, our Mayor, our Village President, he has a birthday on the 17th of this month, and he is accepting cash donations. So can you guys join with me in singing him a happy birthday?
That was a joke.
Huh? It's not a joke. Let's sing happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday here, Kevin. Happy birthday to you.
Got a lighter, blow out the candle.
Yeah, don't give up your day job.
Thank you, Ray.
All right.
Hey, 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 that can't be it, because we're missing out on the birthday boy you just gave his birthday yesterday, and we wouldn't want to go with, forget about Mr. or trustee Ray Danny and his birthday, turning 59 again. There we go.
No, that was Ray Ray's birthday.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Ray Ray was 52 years old yesterday. And we had, well, I'll share it with you. We had a caravan, my granddaughter put it together, they met at Bartlett Hills, and we had to have at least two dozen cars that came by blowing the horns and waving at Ray Ray. And he, it's a birthday he'll never forget. And the Mayor participated in that, so did Doc Cameron, and a number of people here in the village, Mike Musson, a number of Lotterians and whatnot. I'm not, I'm missing so many people, but he was absolutely ecstatic about it. So that was Ray Ray's birthday yesterday, 52 years old. So thanks for reminding me about that, Doc.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Danny. Appreciate the birthday wishes. I am turning 39, so it's May 17. Those of you who want to participate in the town hall portion of the meeting, I believe John's our IT guy that's on this call, so John, is there anyone? We'll give them a couple minutes. If you want to address the board, you're able to, I believe, if you're connected, and John will try to facilitate that. John, is there anyone that's raising their hand or throwing anything in the chat?
I don't see anything at this moment.
Okay, we'll give you a couple of minutes if you are on virtually and you want to address the board. You can hit the participants, little icon on the bottom, most screens, that's where it's at, and then you'll see raise hand, and you're able to raise your hand if you want to do that. All right, thank you, John. As always, if you have any comments or questions, certainly reach out to staff or any of us. Next item we have on the agenda this evening is the Standing Committee Reports. First Standing Committee Report is Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There is nothing under building and zoning tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next Standing Committee Report is Community and Economic Development Committee Chairman Gabrenia.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item on our committee this evening, the Site E Sale and Purchase Agreement. I would ask Paula, is it Paula that will be taking us through this?
Yes, I'm sorry, I can unmute myself.
Thank you.
I think I would prefer that we do it like the normal way, if we just make a motion and then a second, and then we can go through the discussion. Is that okay, Chairman Gabrenia?
Yes, we can do that. I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of real estate owned by the Village of Bartlett, which is no longer necessary, appropriate, required for the use of, profitable to the village, or for the best interest of the village, and approving a real estate purchase and sale agreement between the Village of Bartlett and MMAJ LLC, and a development agreement for the property located at the southwest corner of East Railroad Avenue and South Bertow Avenue, Bartlett, Illinois.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Gabrenia, and a second by trustee Danny. Now, for discussion, Chairman Gabrenia, I think you wanted to turn it over to Paula.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, I'll just give a brief overview. So the Village Board has continued efforts to implement both the downtown TOD plan as well as selling the village-owned property that we refer to as Site E. It's a parcel at the southwest corner of Railroad Avenue and Bertow. And the Village Board provided us direction to continue negotiating with Mr. Rafidia. The Board discussed an LOI for this site, which had favorable number of votes. However, as it stood, it would not have made the necessary votes to pass the higher standard that's needed for the sale of property. So we went back, Brian Maraz and I went back to Mr. Rafidia and his attorney, and worked out the agreement that's before you, addressing a number of the issues that the Board raised in that previous discussion. What has not changed is the sale price of the property of $400,000, less a credit toward the buyer's cost to remove the excess soil on the site, and to remove and relocate underground utilities, so that the net purchase price remains at $350,000. One of the issues that was raised was the building design itself and the quality of the materials. And this agreement incorporates the downtown overlay zoning district, and as such, it is subject to the building facade and design requirements, building material restrictions, and the prohibited building facade materials and quality provisions in that district. Another one of the concerns that was raised in that previous meeting was the timing of the project. And this contract grants the village the right of first refusal to purchase the property back from the developer for the purchase price, in the event that the construction of the project is not commenced within one year from the date of closing, or if already commenced, it is not diligently pursued. Another concern that was raised by the Board was the use of prevailing wage. Prevailing wage is not legally required for this project, but because of the village's involvement in these negotiations, it was part of the agreement that is before you. On this particular issue, Mr. Rafidia has met some of the concerns of the village in terms of using certain contractors and providing greater detail on the use of an experienced apartment developer, Ponorelli American Construction Enterprises, and also to give the village greater assurance of the high quality of the apartment project. This apartment project that is being presented is a five-story, modern apartment building with 104 units. Based on that 104 units, we calculated that it would provide significant boost to our downtown, and it also would result in fees of approximately $676,000, both from fees and from property taxes, that would be bumped up to $976,000. We are considering that we would see a gain of $70,000 to $80,000 in additional revenues on an annual basis, based if the building was at full capacity, between the property taxes paid and the anticipated increase in sales tax generated from new residents. There is an incentive to the developer. We agreed to waive $145,302 in general municipal donations, and waived $28,800 in police donations. Under the incentive structure, the developer would pay the balance of the donations for the village, for the police, in the amount of $38,888, plus full donations for the other taxing districts in the amount of $476,906. So total net donations to be paid in the amount of $515,315. Within this agreement, there is a cap on the fees, and a reduction in some of the permit fees. That's how we arrived at that number. Both the sale contract and the development agreement is included in your materials, and that is what is before you tonight. And we're happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. When I looked at it, believe me when I tell you this, I'm very satisfied with the way the agreement's written at this point in time. My only concern is that we talk about the timing of the project, that he has to do something within the first year, I believe. I can't find it right now.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, yeah, one year, I found it. And with this coronavirus that we're going through right now, we're not even sure we're gonna have stores open in the end of June, or, you know, we have no idea what's in front of us. How are we going to work with that if he cannot, for some reason, commence with the construction of this project within 12-month period after signing the contract?
Construction's allowed? No.
Sorry?
I believe that construction is allowed during this period.
No, I know, but let's say, you know, financing, he has to arrange for that and whatnot. There's many variables that, you know, he may, you know, have issues with, that he may not be able to, you know, be able to start construction in this.
Yeah, I think that timeframe is plenty, plenty of time to get things moving, in my opinion.
Okay, all right.
There were no concerns raised by the developer or his attorney on that issue?
It was just a question, I guess.
Chairman Gabrenia?
Turned off the coffee grinder.
Are there any other questions or comments from the Board?
No.
Hearing none, Mr. President, do we call for a vote?
Yes. Is everybody still, I see some people dropping in and out, I'm assuming everybody's still here.
Mayor, can we confirm that trustee Ranky is present? He texted me saying he was having submission.
Yeah, I'm right here.
Okay, okay, just so, do you need us to reiterate anything, trustee Ranky?
No.
Okay, trustee Cameron, you look like you dropped out too. Are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here. I just, video.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I don't think there's anything else, so with that, if there's, is there any other discussion? I know people have a little bit of a delay sometimes, so I'll give it a minute. Hearing none, we have a first and a second. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, by the way, this is Ordinance 2020-42. Okay, we're gonna start with trustee Hopkins?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
President Wallace?
I don't know if I have to vote, but I'd vote yes. I think, I think we have five to six, right?
Right.
Five to one.
Five to one.
Five to one, or five to one, I mean, but I would vote yes, just for the record, but, okay, that motion carries. Correct, Village Attorney Maraz, is that the majority that we need? You're muted.
You're muted, Brian.
Brian, you're muted.
Okay. Yes, that had the requisite six votes of the corporate authorities, which is the President and the Village Trustees. So six "I" votes means that the motion carried and the ordinance passed.
All right, motion carries, ordinance passed. Thank you, Chairman Gabrenia.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The next item on our Standing Committee Reports this evening is under Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Danny.
Mr. President, we have nothing on the agenda, and I'm very proud to say our golf course is open.
Thank you, Chairman Danny. Next License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have four items on the table tonight. First is Item 1, the appointment of each of the officers on an annual basis. So I move to consent to the appointment of each of the officers as made by the Village President.
So moved. I mean, a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Cameron. Will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, wait on it, hold on, is there any discussion regarding the officers?
I have none.
I have none.
None.
All right, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our next item is the appointment of the zoning administrator. I hereby move to designate Roberta Grill as zoning administrator for the Village of Bartlett.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Danny. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item is the professional services agreement between the Village of Bartlett and Brian E. Maraz and Associates, PC. I move to approve Resolution 2020-...
43.
43, a resolution approving of the professional service agreement between the Village of Bartlett and Brian E. Maraz and Associates, PC.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Danny. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
That motion carries.
All right, next item is contract with Bob Krupp. I move to approve Resolution 2020-44, a resolution approving of the professional service agreement between the Village of Bartlett and the law offices of Robert J. Krupp, PC.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Cameron. With the clerk, please call, is there any discussion?
No.
With the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Danny? Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Right, last item for this evening is the professional services agreement with Storino, Romillo, and Durkin. I move to approve resolution 2020-45, a resolution approving of the professional service agreement between the Village of Bartlett and the law firm of Storino, Romillo, and Durkin.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Danny. Will, is there any discussion?
Just a quick question. This is the ordinance violation attorney?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
That motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Items six and seven have already been addressed on consent. That's, so that's all we have for license and ordinance.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item on our committee reports this evening is Police and Health Committee Chairman Carbonero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing on our agenda tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonero. Finally, on Public Works Committee Chairman Camer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, one item on our agenda this evening, that's a motion to approve resolution 2020-
46.
46.
Yes.
Resolution approving the Apple Orchard Pump Station Upgrade Agreement between the Village of Bartlett and John Neri Construction Company Incorporated of Addison, Illinois.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Danny. Is there any discussion?
Could Dan Dinges give us a quick overview of this project?
Sure, this is the pump station. It's located south of the Home Depot on 59. The lift station is kind of a regional lift station. It takes in the Brewster Creek Industrial Park, Lake In the Hills subdivision area, and Camp and Elliott Lift Stations, along with some gravity sewer. And then pumps to the south and east to get across from, across 59, and then heads to the Bittersweet Waste Water Treatment Plant. This lift station's in need of repair. It currently has some, it's a steel can down in the ground, and it's got leaks and cracks in the steel. There's actually groundwater coming in. And actually, one of our pumps, there's two pumps in there. One of the pumps is currently down. So we have a contract, emergency contract right now with Rain for Rent, that if the current pump were to go down, they would come out and drop in a temporary pump. But it's in need of repair, so that we can take care of all those issues.
Thank you, Dan.
Any other questions?
Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Camer. Next item on our agenda this evening is new business. Does anybody have any new business they would like to discuss? Hearing none, we'll go to questions. Anybody have a question for staff?
I have a quick question for Paula. I know we've talked several times about brush pickup. Has it been determined that we're not going to bring brush pickup back at all for a few days, or a few years? Or what's the plan for that?
I believe we were going to revisit it at the contract renewal. Scott, do you remember when that date is?
That is about approximately three years. And it was a January 1 contract. So it would be 2022.
All right, thank you.
All right. Good question. I know it's a topic around my neighborhood a lot, but I think we did decide we're out of the brush business as a village, anyway. I still believe that we need to do some work on some type of a creative mechanism to get our waste removal folks or some other side way to appease those that have a lot of yard waste. I don't know what the answer to that is yet, but I think the Board really needs to kind of brainstorm around that and try to direct staff as to find out what that is. Thank you for bringing that up, trustee Hopkins.
While we're on the topic of garbage, I just wanted to let the Board know that beginning next garbage week, group will start beginning taking bulk items one at a time. And we will roll out that information to our residents in the next couple of days.
Okay, reiterate what a bulk item is.
White goods such as a couch, a bed, a washer, dryer, things of that nature.
Okay.
What's one at a time? What happens if somebody has a chair out there and, let's say, a washing machine? You only take one item?
That would be two bulk items, so they would be over the limit of one.
Got you. All right, thank you, sir.
All right, anything else for anyone? We'll be moving directly into the committee of the whole meeting following this meeting. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a most and to adjourn the board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Carbonero. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Camer?